Mic's on. Take a motion to come back in the session.
Make a motion to be come back in session.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we're back in session.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Alright, could you read the next case?
I sure will. Docket OC-19-019, an application has been filed requesting a side yard setback variance for a proposed addition located at 9322 Plumwood Place, Crestwood.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. As you mentioned, the application is for 9322 Plumwood Place for side yard setback variance. Zoning is R2. It is lot 327 of Orchard Grass Hills, Section 3B, and the lot size is roughly 2/10ths of an acre, 1/15th. Here we have an aerial. So it's important to mention first off, it is pie-shaped, so that dictates a lot of why this variance is even in front of us today. The surrounding properties are all zoned R2. The required side yard setback within the R2 residential district is 25 feet total for both sides, if no street side. Here we have your buildable...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So here, the shaded triangle essentially shows your buildable area. Now, it can shift with your 25 feet to where, like we had mentioned earlier, it can go anywhere from 7 to 18. So for the purpose of this conversation, this is essentially what we're working with. Here we have the two sides, the two side yard setbacks. Now, there's a footprint, right here is your footprint of your existing 39 and 1/2 by 12-foot deck. The addition is going to be exactly where the footprint is today. So, it's also important to mention, these two numbers right here. So this left corner is 8 feet from their property line, and on the right side, it is 13 feet, totaling 21. Here we have the existing house. Here is the proposed addition. Now, we have this little triangle here, and that's progressing more into the setback, and that's why we're here today. So, like I mentioned earlier, due to the irregular lot geometry, the applicant is asking or requesting a side yard setback variance of 4 feet. Per the plan submitted, the shaded area is the proposed addition. And as it stands today, that is where your existing deck is now. Here's the second floor. Here are renderings or elevations. Per the applicant's justification statement, the shape of the lot doesn't allow for the expansion desired. The statement, or the style of the expansion already exists in the neighborhood and won't detract from the appearance or value of said neighborhood. Currently, the footprint of the deck is where the new living space will be. In addition, the character of the neighborhood won't be affected as the addition is nearly hidden from street view. So this slide and the following slides will be all pictures on site. So here we have the extended, that's 12 feet right there. Here's your 13 feet, as you're looking towards the street. Here's your 8 feet, as you're looking towards the street on the left side of the house. This is as you, if you're looking at the house, and you walk to the backyard, you're on the right side, and you're looking down to where it gets narrower. And this is on the other side, it's the 8-foot side, looking down as it gets narrower. Here we have the deck right here. So this is essentially where their expansion is, or their addition is going to go. So you have your photos right there. Here's just the other side. Here's your west view, looking north, or looking west for your adjoining property owner. There's your south view, looking down Plumwood Place. There's your east view, looking towards the subject property. Here's your north view. It's also important to mention that when you're looking at the house, you can't see the existing deck as it stands today, so really, the odds of you seeing the addition fairly low as well. Here's the north view. And in summary, the applicant is requesting a side yard setback variance. The required side yard is 25 feet. The requested side yard is 4 feet. Therefore, the variance requested is 4. Won't happen to entertain any questions at this time.
Can you go back to the, I think it was second or third slide, where I was asking about the reg that you showed with 25 feet?
Mm-hmm.
So it's 25. Now move forward till you come to that one. If I'm looking at this right, it shows me that there's only 20 feet between the existing structure and the property line currently. In the front.
I'm confused right there.
The closest...
Shelley, hang on. The closest is 8 feet. You've got to look at the nearest setback, not the greatest setback. So they're proposing to enclose the deck, and it will be 8 feet, 13 feet on the other side.
You are correct, but that's not my point.
Okay.
My point is, if you look up at the front, right here, that says it's 20 feet, and that the primary structure is supposed to be 25, yet it says it's 20?
No, it's a minimum of 7, a total of 25.
Thank you. That's where I'm getting confused.
Yes.
Now I understand.
So these lines, they can, yeah, you can shift them.
Alright, now I'm with you.
It's not a hard and steady setback like you have on corner lots. This gives you a little wiggle room.
Yeah, okay. So if, in fact, then, they, if you built a deck, the deck would have to be how far from a side? If they built a deck on, behind the addition as proposed, how far would it have to be?
If the deck could be 5 feet, 10?
Ask them if they're even going to build a deck.
I understand, but I'm not asking whether they're going to, I'm asking what the rule
An open, unenclosed, unroofed deck can encroach 15 feet into the rear yard set... I'm sorry, 10 feet into the rear yard setback. So if the rear yard setback is 25 feet, the deck can be as close as 15 feet to the rear yard.
To the rear. What about the side?
Side yard, it has to meet the setbacks of the side yards.
I think depending on the size of the possible deck, they would more likely have to come back because the rear yard setback is out of play. I mean, it's pretty far back.
Right.
And it's very hilly, and it's just, I don't think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, rear yard's not the issue.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Alright, if the applicant can come forward.
You tell me, sir, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Stephen Markson, 9322 Plumwood Place, Crestwood, Kentucky.
My name's Joy Sonder, 9322 Plumwood Place, Crestwood.
Thank you.
Alright, if you could state the case and tell us what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so the reason why we're here is because we have learned in the last couple of years that we've had issues with our plumbing, which kind of brought on the idea of maybe adding on as well. First of all, I want to state, we have seven children, and to, in order to provide a better home and better quality of life, we wanted to give more bedroom space. We didn't have that many kids when we moved in. We've been there about 18, 19 years, and over the years, we've accumulated the kids. And so, anyway.
You can...
Yeah, we all know how that happens. Anyway, beside the point. So, in the last couple of years, we noticed some issues with some bugs in our house, and we couldn't figure out what was going on. But in short, we found out we had a sewer leak under our house, under the slab. And so we have drain flies, and we can't get rid of them. Every year, they start getting bad about now, going into fall. So that was one of the big reasons why we started pursuing this avenue, is in order to get the plumbing fixed. But while we were doing that, we thought, well, let's see about expanding, if we can do that. And you saw some of the plans that we were looking at, hopefully pending approval, that we would go to. So with the idea of that, and providing a quality of life for our family, we didn't feel like this was going to be encroaching anywhere in the neighborhood, causing any problems. There are additional, there is at least one house we didn't go searching out. There is one other house in the neighborhood that has done this. All we're doing and asking is, was brought out, is just to try to take our deck area off, and just build the house out to that, to provide the extra bedroom space, extra bathroom. We have nine people in the house, and one and 1/2 bathrooms, one shower. So, we've been coping with that for a while, and we've considered other options, but we felt like because of aging parents that live nearby, that we would like to try to stay in the locale, so that we can help in that area. As time goes on, it gets, you know, more necessary. Do you have anything to add?
The sewer problem has gotten worse because of the smell, and they were going to end the toilet in the bathroom downstairs, the half bathroom, doesn't always flush, which we found out was because of the crack under the house. And so, we were going to have to fix that problem, and so we started looking at adding just a shower, because shower time at our house is crazy. So, just got into, let's add some bathrooms, and our boys downstairs, our teenagers, we have an open basement, and they just have beds down there. There's no privacy, they don't have their own rooms. And so, in looking at adding the bedrooms downstairs, that way they could have their own rooms with a door, and some privacy.
Anything additional?
Not at this time.
Okay. Questions by the board?
I do have one thing to add. All we're really looking for is just that little spot right there on the neighbors', I believe that it's a rental property out in New York, but we've had several neighbors in there over the years, and they've all been wonderful. But we're just asking for a little bit of spot right there. Also, we have talked to several neighbors in the surrounding area that we had to mail the variance notice to. Several of them were in favor of this. They really, in fact, one of the neighbors today, or yesterday, two days ago, she was supposed to write a positive letter, but we never received it, but I don't know if maybe it came up somewhere or not. But anyway, everybody seemed to be real positive that we've spoken to. We felt like we'd only have one objection, so that's the only thing I had to add.
Tom, did you receive anything either for or against from anybody?
Yes, I did. I believe I included it in your emails packet. This is an email I received from Ms. Elvins-Guiden, after a phone conversation on the Friday, June 7th. Had a phone conversation with her on Friday, June 7th, and a couple hours later, at 4:02,
I think, though, what I'm trying to do is get this in, then there's a time for in favor or against, and then you'll get a chance to rebut what's against, and obviously this has questions.
We could just add to before, whatever the process is.
Right. If it's part of your initial testimony, I'm fine. If you're going to address this, then we need to add at a later point.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Okay. Alright. Any additional testimony? Any questions by the board? Alright.
I'm sorry. One thing I did want to add was, that I didn't bring up is, to create, it kind of touches on this, but we do realize there was a parking issue. So, in order to do this, to help, we use our garage for storage, and allowing us to do this would help us get, drive, or the ability to use our garage as a garage for cars.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Yes, sir.
Well, swear you in?
Carolyn Campbell.
Raise your hand. Do you swear?
Raise your right hand, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Lowell Campbell, 9326 Plumwood Place. 9326 Plumwood Place.
And your first name?
Lowell.
Thank you, Lowell. And you? L-O-W-E-L? Okay. Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Have same address?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, my main objection, I understand the need for more living space, believe me, but this is not a DUI weekend project. My husband is suffering from terminal cancer. The noise and the mess will go on for months. He's supposed to rest every afternoon. Our bedroom is right there, on that same side. And we, you know, we have no option. We have nowhere else to go while it's being built. And it is, it will be, I guess you'd consider it denying us the use and enjoyment of our property, and the fact that he, he needs his rest. He needs every afternoon. And the doctor has told him that. He needs to go outside. He'll take a chair and go pull weeds, but there's certain things he can't do, and there's, we can't get away from it. We understand it, but if it could be delayed, he's going to die. That's it. He has bone cancer. He's taken the chemo, which is just, that was the last one. It's just a prolonging. It's not a cure. So you can understand with us, it's the noise and the mess that's going to be created. And right now, we just do the best we can, taking care of each other, until we can't. So that's our main objection.
Okay. Sir, you wish to add anything?
No, she's pretty well, pretty well said it like it is.
Okay. Alright. Any questions? Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? No one else to speak? Rebuttal of the applicant, so now would be the time to address anything that you've seen or heard in terms of...
Well, we sympathize with the objection. That's not something that's under our control as well. I don't foresee this being during, I mean, most construction goes on during daytime. There's no reason why, no way to really control what noise level may exist. I mean, that's all speculation, honestly. So, I think the timeline, if I'm understa... We would have, had we not realized that we had to go through this process, we would have already had started, and probably have been close to being done before the end of the year easily. But pending this, we were told by our contractor that we should be done by the end of the year anyway. So, trying to extend that, with seven kids, potentially some of them might move out, we still would use that same space, and it wouldn't be as valuable, maybe, if we had to wait. So our quality of life is still as it is. We've been strained for a long time, and we would... Yeah, and the plumbing issue, the plumbing still has to be fixed regardless, no matter what. The other thing it brought up on here, parking everywhere, we've addressed that many months back. We don't have that issue anymore. The only thing is, we use, we utilize our driveway. We do have some that drive, several teenagers that drive, but as they move on in life, they will take their cars with them. And we have considered also doing a pad on the side. We've gotten a look at where the easements, or the, what do you call it, the electric lines and all the sewage and all that. We saw where all that was, so we felt like that would be something we would like to try to do as well, if we had to. But by doing this, it gives us more...
Free up the garage that way, and wouldn't have to have...
Yeah, we could use the garage, utilize the garage without using it for storage and use it for cars.
And that point about other people moving in, that's not going to happen. We are at capacity. There's no one moving in. And I'm not cooking for anybody else, so that's, that's not a problem.
It's never the intent to try to rent this property out or anything. The other thing was brought up about parking. We've got videos and pictures of just this week, two nights ago, that this is a very common problem throughout the neighborhood. There's parking on the streets, including across the house, from the...
Campbells.
Campbells. There's several cars. The other night, there was eight cars down the street. It's something that's happened.
We're not driveway.
We felt like we were kind of getting singled out on this. Probably a lot of the same family. But it's common throughout the neighborhood. If you come through after hours, any given night, you'll see that this is an issue throughout the neighborhood. We have addressed this, we've taken care of it, and we feel like we're compliant with everything that everybody's asking of us.
So, questions in by the board? I'm going to start. Then, is the parking that is being done is in, on the street that's allowed, correct?
I'm sorry?
We're not parking on the street. We only park in our driveway.
Okay, but...
The other cars, you're not supposed to park on the street.
Okay, but if you parked in the street, it's allowed to park in the street, right?
There's signs posted that says you're not supposed to, but...
Not in our subdivision.
Not in our subdivision.
It's in a daydream subdivision that we have to go through. They have that. But ours doesn't say that. I think, I can't remember what the restrictions were, but I believe that you can do it to a set time, but like, not overnight, maybe.
So one of the concerns that was brought up was the thought of getting proper rest and those kinds of issues. If, if, if the, or what you're asking for would be approved, would you be agreeable to stop using power equipment and nailing and doing construction after a certain time of the day?
Think that would be reasonable.
Like, to set a restriction to try to, to try to be reasonable and make neighbors happy, or anything like that?
Yeah, and that's why I brought up, most construction is done that way, out of respect for the neighbors. And I feel like that the contractor we have, we've known him for a while, and they'd be good with that, and we wouldn't have a problem with that as well.
The next question I have is based on, and Tom, could you put up the drawing with the triangle and showing where the building would be? First or the second? I honestly don't remember which one it was. Alright, thank you, that'll work. So, if I'm understanding, based on the variance that's requested, you could, again, if, and again, I'm not saying this is any, I'm not trying to foreshadow what's going to happen. If this was denied, you could still put on an addition, it'd just have to be four foot less on the one side, correct? So you could, you could still do your construction, and maybe this is part of staff, they're nodding their head. So I believe you could still do this. The only, only reason we're really here is because of the four foot that you're asking to go into the side yard.
Yes, and that is possible. It would be not as desired, obviously, because of the way it would make the house living space. It might render walls harder to use for...
Because it comes straight off the back of the house now.
Again, I'm not trying to foreshadow. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if it was denied, one of your options that you could seriously consider would just be to fit it within the triangle space that you see in front of us.
Possibly, but I also would like to point out that a neighboring property to this side, to, if you're facing our house to our right, which I believe is the Campbell's property, they do have a covered area that is much closer to our fence. It's not enclosed. It is enclosed, but it's not like walled living space. But they do have that area there, but it's much closer than what we're even trying to ask for. And other properties do, but it's just because of the size or shape of our property, as was brought up by Tom, we don't have a lot of option. This would be more desirable, but that's the reason why we're here.
So with the triangle lot, you're limited in what you can accomplish, okay?
And I think the neighboring, one on the left side, they're, they have an open deck, but it's kind of closer than even what we're asking for as well.
It's open.
But it's an open deck, it's not enclosed to the degree that the other side is.
Other questions?
Just to make sure I understand you clearly, if you get approved for this, you intend to start immediately, is that correct?
Our builder, he indicated he can get done by the end of the year, and the only thing that held us up was, I asked him about this, and he thought, you know, we should have checked on that, and that's why we're here. So, we're waiting on that. So as soon as that gets approved, I don't know what his timeline is at this point, but we were hoping to get done by the end of the year.
Okay, and I'm hearing you clearly. You're hiring a professional, you and your boys aren't going to work on this for the next several years.
No, we might tear, like you saw some in the backyard. We haven't really completed...
We might take the deck down?
Yeah, we might do some of the destruction, demolition, but as far as being considerate to the neighbors, if after hours would be a problem, we would definitely abide by that.
And yes, it is a contractor, and he's contracting out all the building parts.
Yes, right. And therefore, by surrounding yourself with a professional general contractor, they have access to the resources, in the workmanship, in the manpower, so they can move in a reasonable length of time, given weather and availability of subs and things of that nature. And it's not just a, me and my family are going to work on this for the next several years. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand that. I've heard you say that I'm just looking for absolute clarity.
We're not intending to, I don't have the time to do that. If we do anything, it might be like tile the bathroom or something on our own, but the main structure is going to be done by outside contractors.
The getting it dried in. The foundation, framing, roofing, exterior, and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So I understand, what is the estimated date of construction, to the best of your knowledge?
I'd have to talk to the contractor. We kind of put everything in a hole pending this hearing. And I don't know what his timeline is, I don't...
He was ready to go before, and then we realized, once we applied for this, it was a waiting period, and then we had to wait for this meeting, so he just kind of, he's just waiting until we hear today.
And that's been in a period of about a month, maybe, we waited, because we found out we had to do this, and we missed last month's hearing, so we're, we got a couple weeks in, so I don't know if he's developed any more work between then or not, I do not know.
But like, our plans are all ready, he's already got his contractors lined out. He's ready to go.
If there's no further questions, thank you. Now it's time for rebuttal by the opposition. Would you like to say anything? If you do, we'd have to...
We're most of it, so...
If you have anything to say, we need you to come up to the podium so that we could
Got into the sidewalk parking. It's a state law, you don't block the sidewalk. It's not an Orchard Grass or anything, or an old, like, I mean, it's, and they do, they park on the sidewalk. You can't, the kids have to go out in the street to get around and go to school. Not that I have any left, I'm safe, but like I said, it's the noise. It's going to be very disrupted for quite some time. And he cannot get, no doctor tells you how long. They don't do that. It could be a week. They've got him scheduled for chemo through September. But that may be extended, dependent upon how it's working. That's my big thing, is the noise and, you know, it's not the way I want to live. I don't, didn't move into a construction area. So, you know, like I said, I understand the need for more room, but most people outgrow a place, they go buy a bigger one. I can't, I can't give you a good valid legal reason.
So, number one, we... So number one, I, I'm sorry for your guys' situation and I hope your treatment goes well.
Thank you.
But you do understand that even if this board turns it down, one of the things they could go back and do is they could submit plans that's just four feet shorter on the side and they could still do the construction.
Yeah.
So the question for me as a, and this board, is to whether or not the four foot is allowable or not, whether we would, we would approve that. But even if we denied it, you understand that they could go back and still fit within their footprint and still do construction regardless of whether we allow the four foot or not.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I understand that, yeah. But I'd appreciate four foot less. Maybe it would take them less time to do it that way. But that's, you know, that's, that's us. That's what we've got.
Any questions?
Just a couple, just to kind of, so I can wrap my mind around. How long have you folks lived in the subdivision or in your home?
Since 1908, May 1908.
During that time, has there been any other homes in close proximity to you folks that have done relatively large remodel or construction projects?
No, there's no remodeling. There's no remodeling on our street.
I was just curious, you know, like if it was close, if you could say, well, you know, this one went on and we could hear that noise and that constant pounding was driving us nuts or something and-
There's been no remodeling out, additions or outside on our street or cul-de-sac. Inside, people have done work inside.
Spruce them up and stuff. Yeah, I just didn't know if like from the enjoyment of the interior of your home, if you have experiences that, that you could lead to say this was a nuisance when the, you know, the family across the street did a project or something.
Yeah.
Sure.
The only place I know of that has done some extensive expanding like that, sort of like the Saunders are proposing, is sort of over on the other side of the subdivision.
But not within a door or two or three of your location, sure.
That's the only one, that was fairly recent.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had an experience that would, you know, that, that you feel steadfast that the noise is going to be a terrible nuisance or something like that, you know, that, and again, I sympathize for your whole situation. Thank you for your service to our country as well. Sure.
Twenty-one and a half years. Now, you know, we know they don't do work at night.
No, of course not.
But it's, he's supposed to rest every afternoon.
And is there a certain time that you find yourself taking this, this time for this rest of each day?
Whenever he feels like it.
It sort of comes on, you know, you're wore down, beat down and you sort of catch it when you can.
I understand. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so before, before you sit down, because I'm getting up and down, just so you know, this is the rebuttal of the opposition. The next step is, is there any final statements from the opposition is our next thing? So is there any final statement you want to make before you sit down? I didn't want to make you sit down and get back up.
It's good exercise. No, I mean, like I said, that's as good as we've got, our reasoning.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you all listening. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board.
Okay, final statement by the applicant? Nope. All right. Board members, any final questions you want to ask of staff, opposition, applicant? Anyone?
No, I don't have any.
All right. Seeing none, we'll close the floor and open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Well, looking at the different photos here and diagrams, this is a very irregular lot. Most of the lots that I have seen in where they live are pretty much a regular triangle, where it gives you more flexibility, more room. This is a very limiting type of property. So I have no problem with the, with the applicant and his request.
My comments on this is, is that I agree with everything you just said, that it's, it's only .2 acres. It is in a regular lot shape and so there's only a limited building area, but what's before us today is about a section that would go into it at the most, four feet into the side yard setback. I think as we've already done through the line of questioning in the testimony, they could come back and file and say, I want to build this anyway, if we, even if we denied it, they could come back and say, I want to build it, we're just going to have to do it at an angle along that line or four feet less in or something. And for the most part, the addition can be, should be, and will go up. The second thing is, is there's going to be construction of some sort because they have to fix the sewage issue. It is something that is, needs to be done for their own health and safety. So that's going to be done and this is all part of it for me. So for me, if I look at the four foot, while I heard very clearly the opposition and I sympathize with the position of the opposition, I can honestly say that I don't think the four foot, even if we denied this, that I believe the applicants would have every right, whether they would, I think they would, but I don't know that, that they would have every right to come back and do construction anyway and four foot would make no difference one way or the other to them. So be given the irregular lot, given what they're trying to accomplish, given the fact that they have a sewage problem, I think the request is a reasonable one and I would be in favor of, of the four foot variance.
I would concur with all that you just said.
I agree also.
All right. So at this point then, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to approve docket OC 19-017 for a side yard setback variance of four feet due to an irregular shaped lot for the proposed home addition and because it will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area, it will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, it will not allow an unreasonable circumvention to requirements of this regulations. The variance shall, conditions of approval, the variance shall only apply to the application considered at June the 20th, 2019, Odom County Board of Adjustments Public Hearing.
Before I accept this, look for a second on this. I believe in your statement, you said dash 017, and I think you should have said 019?
Yes.
Okay, so do we need to amend it or can he just, there's not been a second yet?
Okay, I'd like to restate docket OC 19019.
So we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. All right. The next thing on our docket would be then to approve the minutes. I have a couple of corrections that we need to do. One, on, if you go to page two at the very bottom, after member Riley had read docket OC 19014, I wanted to add, Rob Houchens recused himself since he has a potential interest in the outcome. And then if you go to page, where is it? Page five, I would ask that, and again, this is where I need to understand, I didn't abstain, I was recused, so do we add a line that says, board member Houchens was recused? So I was absent during that vote. Okay, I didn't know how that should be stated because I, then immediately after, we're, right after the stars, the second row of stars there, it says, board member Riley called docket OC 19015. Right above that, I think we should say, since I had recused myself, I need to say I rejoined the, the meeting. Any other corrections? If there's no other corrections, I will take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I make a motion that we move to approve the minutes with the noted modifications by member Rob Houchens.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The next item on our docket is that next, I was going to-
I was just going to say, before we close the meeting, we will have a July hearing. I know there are some conflicts of attendance and so we'll discuss those after the meeting to get a time and date for the July hearing.
We don't need to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, so after the meeting, if we could, as we need to, we do need to discuss that because we do have, I know, three members that will not be here on next month's date. So-
Three?
He won't be here, I won't be here, Larry won't be here.
I didn't know Michael was going to be here, so, okay.
Yep. So we need to discuss that after that. Any other business that we need to cover? The item that was tabled, we don't need to do anything with that, correct?
It remains on the table.
It just remains on the table?
Mm-hmm.
All right. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, state, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Mic's off?
Yeah, two operations.